If you will, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did a good job, Wes.
All right, Board, we have an agenda before us. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second.
Ms. Ware, Mr. Ritter, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. First up tonight, we have our recognitions and our terrific Tigers. Dr. Glass.
Yeah, I believe our terrific Tigers are staged and ready out in the hallway. These are students from each of our buildings that have been selected, received this award based on their service to others, their leadership, and their scholarship. So without further ado, we will start bringing them in.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Alma Schrader Elementary, Shelby Matukowicz, 3rd grade, daughter of Lena and Thomas Matukowicz. Shelby displays such great character and is an amazing role model to the rest of her classmates. She's a hard worker who's always willing to help others, is a friend to everyone, and always has a smile upon her face. Even when she is challenged in class, she does not back down or give up.
Come on down.
Blanchard Elementary.
Clifford Elementary, Cash Boyer, 4th grade, son of Danielle and Brian Boyer. Cash is constantly setting an excellent example for his peers by being safe, respectful, and responsible in all settings. He's an incredibly hard worker. He's always willing to participate in class discussions and learning activities. Overall, Cash is very helpful, reliable, and kind. Clifford Elementary is lucky to have him as a student. Franklin Elementary, Cal McFerrin, kindergarten, son of Patricia Robinson and Keith McFerrin. Cal is a Tigers at Home student who has surpassed all expectations for virtual learning. He's always on time for live Zooms, always participates, and always follows directions. He's focused and takes his schoolwork seriously, as well as turns his assignments in on time. His kindness and caring make him a great role model for his peers. He's going to do big things. Franklin is so proud of you, KJ. Blanchard Elementary, Laisha Robinson, 3rd grade, daughter of Otisha and Brandy and Charles Robinson. Laisha comes in every day with a smile on her face and ready to give 110%. Her eagerness to learn is shown in many ways. She actively participates in every assignment, strives to do her best, always has a positive attitude, and follows instructions every single time.
Great job, Lee. We're so proud of you. You are so deserving.
Who was next? Jefferson? Jefferson Elementary, Bethany Robinson, 1st grade, daughter of Rebecca Robinson and Tommy Robinson. Bethany is a leader through and through, the type of student that others look up to and a girl of great integrity. She does what is right and what is kind, not to earn praise or approval, but because that's who Bethany is. She's empathetic beyond her years, the first to comfort, help, and stand up for others. Bethany may only be in 1st grade, but there's no doubt this girl is going to change the world. Her teacher has promised to be at the Cape Central 2032 high school graduation, just to see who this girl turns out to be. Jefferson knows she will be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Central Middle School, Alexis Bass, 6th grade, daughter of Cheryl and Dean Wright. Oh, Natalie, I'm sorry. Where am I at now? Next page. Sorry, Central Middle School, Natalie Nicholson, 5th grade, daughter of Danell Nicholson. Natalie comes to school with a positive attitude that brightens our room each day. She's eager to engage in learning new material and consistently gives her best effort in every subject. She's kind and polite to other students and adults here at CMS. Natalie is a great all-around student and a blessing to have in class.
That's it?
We can't be done.
We have four more.
Four more plus one for last left.
So we'll catch the rest of them next month, hopefully. Any other recognitions?
Nope.
All right.
Not this month.
Next, we'll move on to information proposals and comments from the audience. Did you have any this month? No? So we'll move on to informational reports. First up is the Board President's Report. And just a couple of quick things. Hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving with their families. I'm sure everyone was kind of a little tighter than normal, but hope everyone didn't eat too much and had a good time. And also just wanted to thank the administration and the rest of the staff for all their hard work in getting everything. Can't believe we've made it through the entire year just about without closing down the district and going virtual. I know a lot of other districts around are really struggling with that right now. And I appreciate all the hard work, and hopefully everyone had a good week off and recharge their batteries and heading into the home stretch with a little more energy. So just wanted to say thank you for that. That's all I have for this month. Next up, we have our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Glass.
I too am very proud of our faculty and staff for all the hard work that they put in this semester. It's been tough, but they've gotten through it. They've got a lot of grit, and I'm very, very proud of them. I hope they had a great Thanksgiving. We did have a week off to recharge. We took this opportunity to deep clean our buildings because of the increased COVID cases that we're experiencing here in the community. I want to stress the importance of wearing a mask. That has really kept us in school this entire semester, is wearing the mask, working with our Health Department, and being able to communicate with them and saying, yes, we do have a positive case, but we were all masked at the time. You know, that's given us a level of protection during this tough time. I want to take a moment to say thank you to Deb Tracy. Deb Tracy is basically our sub-finder or sub-caller. She's done a tremendous job trying to fill the gaps that we've experienced out there with our faculty and staff on quarantine. She's the one that fills them with substitutes, and she's done a great job recruiting substitutes, filling substitutes, making sure that we've got the right people certified and in place. And we couldn't have done this without her, and she's done a great, great job. I want to brag just a little bit on Clifford Elementary. Kate Nazarene in Clifford Elementary served over 500 meals to community members back on November 19th. That was their Thanksgiving meal. Yeah, it was fantastic. They had no idea what to expect, and they served well over 500, and it was just tremendous. They wanted to continue with the tradition, but they knew they couldn't bring everybody together because of this COVID, so they served them in to-go containers, and they just had a big drive-through, and it was just, it was great. Great for the community. Lastly, please note that candidate filing for our school board opens December 15th and closes January 19th. Due to COVID safety precautions, filing will be by appointment only. Anyone who is interested should contact Ms. Turner to schedule an appointment. And that's all I got.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Glass? Comments? All right. We will move on to our program evaluations. This month, we have Parents vs. Teachers by Ms. Keys, and that report was sent out previously. Anyone have any questions or comments regarding this report? Hearing none. We will move on to our Academic Services Report.
I'm just going to give you just a quick update on our Tigers at Home. We ended our Tigers at Home on... We ended our Tigers at Home on the 20th was the last day to enroll in Tigers at Home. Our enrollment numbers are looking pretty good because we prefer to have our kids face-to-face. We know that learning happens better when they're face-to-face. So first semester, our enrollment was 27.94%. And now it is 15.89%. So it was a decrease of 12%, which means parents are feeling more comfortable with their kids in school. And we know that the research now is showing that kids are safer in school than they are at home. So that data's looking good. We are going through and sorting through all of our data. Ms. Turner and I have been doing that today. It's going to take us a couple of weeks to get through all of that so that we can make our moves with students and teachers, whether we're going to keep all of our teachers virtual, or we need to add more face-to-face teachers. So we're working through those numbers at this time. Ms. Turner, do you have anything else you want to add?
Do you have any questions for us?
Just a quick question. So if a student was doing virtual online classes first term, and they chose to come back for a second term to finish out the semester, and if they were behind in their first term, can they make that up in the second term in order to stay on track?
You're probably just talking about high school because we're talking about credit recovery. We have put some things in place for students to make up those courses that they were failing. They're only going to be able to do that one course at a time. So we're assigning one course. When they come back face-to-face, they still have one course that they could take virtually to make up, and we have opportunities during the day, academic advisory, and then we also have it after school as well, opportunities for them to make up that half a credit. So yes, they have an opportunity to do the credit recovery.
But in the other grades outside of high school?
In 7th and 8th, they have after-school programs, and I know K6 has after-school programs.
Well, because they don't start grades until 3rd grade. You're saying like, if they got a D or an F?
Well, if they just fell behind on staying...
Well, I mean, we have RTI, so I mean, that's constantly going to be happening. Like, we're going to figure out where their gaps are. We're doing that for everybody because, I mean, even our kids missed all the fourth quarter, right? Like, so all of our elementary buildings and middle school, I know, have a pretty intense RTI where they look at what the kids, like, where their learning gaps are. And then we work with our supplemental teachers or team teachers during specialized time to try to fill those gaps, right? Like, whatever that might look like, it looks a little different in every building, how they develop their RTI. But yes, I mean, we'll use the data and develop plans for those students that need them to get caught up. I don't know that it will necessarily go back and like, oh, redo this worksheet or that worksheet in those younger grades, but our goal will be to fill in the gaps in their learning.
And I think just to add another component to that, they are working on some things called accelerated learning. So they're doing assessments, and they're seeing where those gaps are, and they're adding those skills while they're teaching new skills. So they're filling in that gap. It's called accelerated learning. So they're doing that as well, and I think they're doing that pretty much K-12 as well, because we know kids haven't been in school since March. So we know that from March to May, there's gaps there as well. So they're doing that along with teaching the new content.
Yeah, because I was just concerned that if they had missed March through the end of term for this year, that that's a lot of material that they could have had issues with, and the way things compound on each other. If they're missing that, it just puts them further behind.
Sometimes they have to put a pause on it and teach the skills that they missed from the previous year.
That sounds like you have a good plan in place. So...
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you. Next up, we have our Instructional Technology Update. Mr. Russell.
All right. So as we were just talking about, you know, it's been since March, and this was one of my favorite things coming into the school year. You know, in the past, teachers would kind of frown upon anything that have to do with virtual and doing online, but you know, it's different, right? I mean, it doesn't matter what we're doing, it's going to look a little bit different, but at the same time, it's kind of the same. And so what's really great is that our teachers have done some amazing, awesome things, and they've gone from, in some cases, in the elementary, not doing any kind of online learning, or at least at the beginning of the year at all, you know, they wait kind of toward the end of the year, and to now, they're all doing something and all prepared for an instance that we might have to go home or learn from home or teach from home. And so it's been really awesome to help teachers out and to see, you know, the teachers that, you know, you wouldn't, that weren't very comfortable at the beginning of the year to see what they're doing now. It's absolutely amazing. And just wanted to brag on them. They're using all sorts of new tools. You guys have, we've talked about Google Classroom and Moodle forever, but you know, going to, using Zoom and headsets with cameras that they can move around and to see some of the videos that they're making for the classes, teachers with YouTube channels now that, you know, three or four years ago, that would have never been on their mind. To creating their own videos using WeVideo and having interactive things for their students to do with Boom Cards and Seesaw and Class Dojo. And my favorite, because you guys know I'm kind of a data geek, is they're starting to use Google Sheets to build kind of instant feedback for math problems. And I've seen this from kindergarten all the way up through 7th and 8th grade. I think one of high school teachers started to do it too. So just they have a list of problems. The kids can fill them out, and they can instantly see whether or not they got them right or not, instead of having to wait until the next day. And so they can get that reassurance right off the bat, which is super helpful for learning. Also, we are starting something new. CMO, as you guys have heard, are switching over to Canvas, and which was why we started with Moodle in the first place, was because that's what CMO was doing. And so we're going to pilot this semester, this coming semester, a new LMS. What's great about Canvas is that anything that our teachers, most of the things that our teachers have created in Moodle can be ported into it, and so we don't lose a lot of prep time and things that they've been using for the last, you know, decade almost of us using Moodle. And so really excited about that. Teachers are excited about that because there's also grade passback to Infinite Campus, and so it's a lot less work for them to do. And so same thing with Google Classroom. And so anything that they do, used to, they would have to, you know, go back and individually put everything again into the gradebook, and that's just a lot of time wasted. And so now we can do that, grade passback, and they're excited about it. Like I said, easy for teachers to build, way easier than Moodle, in my opinion, and most of the people who've used it. And what I really like is that it also has greater parent access. Moodle's kind of hard. Google Classroom, you can do it. It's just very limited on what they can do, but Canvas can give you a much better overview of what your student's doing as a parent and customizable notifications as well. And so like I said, we're really excited to see how that goes this next semester. And that is all I have for you guys.
Any questions? Thank you for that update. Next, we have our CTA report. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Haley Russell there, since that's what I'm going to talk about. I'm not even going to try to put that back. 11 teachers from Cape CTA virtually attended the MST A 100th Assembly of Delegates on November 4th through the 7th. This was all outside of school this year, and it was all virtual, so there was no subs, there was none of that usual stuff. So I know for a lot of people, that was a relief. So, but I think that applauds teachers, though, that they were willing to spend all that time outside of school. Two of those days was all virtual learning. So it was just learning for two days outside of school, and then the Saturday from 9:00 to noon was the Assembly of Delegates where Haley Russell took over as president of MST A. So that's kind of exciting. She's leading for the next year. And then we also elected a new president-elect and a vice president, and then seven resolutions were approved, including, because I didn't want to write them down, but I wanted to just go over three really quickly. And then my phone, of course, closed. The first one is about local control, and all these really, all the resolutions were really dealing with COVID technology and things of that nature, as that's the big year for that. So what these resolutions do is they drive what the people who work full-time for MST A do and what they ask lobbyists to do at the state and federal level, right? So one thing that was passed was supporting policies that describe the health and safety measures that districts will take to mitigate and respond to public health, including what actions the school district will take in response to confirmed contagious diseases in the district. So just updating language, right? Like, there was nothing about that before now because we didn't have to worry about it. So a lot of it was about updating language, but then some of it was things like MST A opposing statewide student assessments during COVID-19 pandemic. As of right now, as far as I checked, that is still in place, though. So, but MST A and many teacher associations, that's probably our big worry and concern right now, that at a time when students are out, you know, I had six emails this morning as soon as I got there saying, six students are gone for two weeks, right? And I'm sure I'll have more tomorrow and tomorrow tomorrow, that we're still having standardized testing at a time when we're trying to teach in a very different world, right? So those were just two of the, I think, big concerns that came out of this year's CTA assembly. So thanks for listening.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you for the report. We have our Treasurer Finance Report. Thank you, sir.
Hello. This report is for October, and I'm going to focus on the general fund. We had a beginning fund balance, October 1st, of a little over 8 million. Revenues received for the month were a little over 1.1 million, and expenses were 1.6. We transferred 810,000 to the special revenue fund, and that covers teacher salaries, leaving us with the ending fund balance in the general fund of a little over 7 million. Our cash and investment detail is listed right below. Those are the banks that hold all of our funds. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Support Services Report.
I only have a couple of items. Jefferson Project is moving along. They're currently in the construction document phase for the plan, so once those are fully written out and whatnot, it'll then go out for the bid process, and that won't be until after Christmas, probably around February, March is what we're looking at when that will go out. We did get Cape Bubble. It's back up and operating. It had been down for a little bit, but it is back up and open. Pumps are working. There's some welding that had to take place internally. So just to put that back out in front of you, that's going to be a project that we're looking at that we're also in a partnership with the city as well. And then lastly, I attended an online winter weather outlook training, and I just want to let you know that we are in an El Nino year, which means it may be wet, it may be snowy, it may be dry, it may be warm, it may be cold, it may be something. So, you know, we're just going to take the look like, you know, hey, it's good. Just poke your head out the window, and if it's wet, it's raining, and if it's cold, it's cold.
Could have been a weatherman. All right, next we have our Board President, or Board President, Board of Reports. First up is our MSBA Delegate Report.
Yeah, I sent out an email earlier today, and I'm going to read some of this to you. MSBA is wanting some feedback no later than January 1st, but a national trend to move school board elections to November. And MSBA anticipates that legislators will attempt to do so in Missouri with the argument that more people vote in November, so school board candidates elected in November would be more representative of the community. But there's also concern that moving the election would draw school boards into partisan politics and make it more expensive to run for school board. So just something to consider if that's something that the board would be interested in doing. I need to provide feedback in January, so...
They've been pushing that for a couple of years now.
All right. Anything else? That's it? All right. Next up is our Legislative Report.
No updates this month.
No updates. All right. And lastly, is our Cape Public School Foundation report.
Yes, it is. The Cape Public School Foundation and Care to Learn will be hosting two food mobiles. One will be December 3rd at Franklin Elementary. It'd be a drive-through from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The second one will be December 17th at Jefferson Elementary, again, drive-through from 10:00 to 12:00. We expect to be feeding 200 families and each spending a total of $8,000, which is awesome. That's all we have tonight.
All right, thank you for that update. Next, we have our approval of consent agenda items. And this evening, we have minutes of previous meetings, October 26th, 2020. There's two sets there, payment of bills, and those were sent out previously. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items?
Second.
Ms. Ware, Mr. Ritter, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Next, we have business for the evening. The only thing we have is an approval. We have our 2021-2022 academic calendar and the motion is to adopt the academic calendar as presented for 2021-2022 school year. I need a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Ritter, Mr. Walker, discussion. Dr. Glass.
Yeah, I'm proud to bring you the 21-22 recommendation tonight. It's been thoroughly vetted by the calendar committee, the CTA and the entire faculty and staff. All had an opportunity to vote on this. There are a couple of things that are constant with all of our calendars. One is that teachers have 183 contracted days. That doesn't change. Also, there is 1,044 hours that were mandated to be in school with students. So we have to maintain that as well. The other thing here is that, what is it, two weeks before the first Tuesday after Labor Day? Yes, thank you. You cannot start, so we adhere to all of those rules and then we work within that. We try to balance out all of our semesters so that they're close to equal, if not actually equal. So after we have all that squared away, basically we put in our professional development days, our breaks, and it all works out to be 183 teacher workdays and 169 total student contact days. And we have our snow days, six inclement weather days that are built into the schedule. So with all that said, this is our recommendation to the school board. The teachers really like this one with 62% because, for the most part, because of the shortened first week back of school. Starts on a Wednesday, so.
The six inclement weather days, is that the same as last year's?
Well, they're just sprinkled in.
As far as the number of them, was there six last year?
Yeah, yeah, it's mandated. You build those in now.
Got you. Yeah, I remember when we made that change. I didn't know if that six we had any control of or not.
So what does the new time start? What does that do to the ending of the first semester for the high school? Does that push it over into January?
Yeah, and that's, that's one thing we don't like about starting so late is because it does, you know, carries over through a break the first semester. And that's, you know, that's not good for students that try to take exams, to be quite frank, because there's, there is some learning loss that takes place there.
Because I know that's why we changed this first semester start date originally was so that we would end first semester before we went to break so that students could actually take some time off and not worry about coming back and taking finals, you know, a week after having two and a half weeks off. Sometimes the legislation doesn't take students into account when they make their decisions, so.
I think the tourism industry kind of outweighed.
So they come back two weeks, is that right? And then take finals. Looks like the 20th, 19th starts.
The 19th.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else have any questions? All right, so the motion on, switch back. The motion on the floor is to adopt the academic calendar as presented for the 21-22 school year.
Second.
Well, we already had one, but if anyone has any questions, comments, no? Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Calendar is approved. That's the only other question I have is what do we do if this pandemic continues on into 21-22? Do we have to change, I mean, do we have to change any, any calendar?
No.
Or make amendments or is there any?
Shouldn't, shouldn't that, I mean, we're prepared to go virtual if, you know, if we can't handle it in-house.
Can I ask a question? You had said something about number of hours of instruction.
1,044 is the minimum.
And that, so that counts virtual or in person? I think it counts both, okay.
That brings up a good question. So what if students don't spend the total amount of time virtually? Does that, how does that affect?
Well, they're guaranteed, I mean, when you're, like you went and talked about virtual? Yeah, they're guaranteed. I mean, Desi looks at it as if you are scheduled virtual, then you, you don't have to be in the seat, just like you wouldn't have to be in the seat in a school day. You know, you may be out on the playground or whatever, you know what I'm saying? You get, you get a credit for six, what, 6.25 hours or something a day? Something like that. So every day you go virtual, you get credit for six, roughly six hours a day.
So they just give you automatic credit for that? It's not based on when the students are logging in or?
If you pass your class.
If you pass your class, yeah.
Because I could think, you know, a student may be able to do four hours of work in three hours and then, and some may,
That's no different.
Some may take five hours to do four hours.
Now you're getting into where the seat time makes a difference too. You know, that argument's always been there. Some students accelerate faster in school and then they're just sitting there for, while the others, you know, try to catch up.
Just curious. All right, so that concludes business for this evening. Next is information proposals from board members. Does anyone have anything for the good of the board? And our next meeting is the 14th, is that correct?
I believe it's 14th.
December 14th, so it's.
It's a quick turnaround.
Yep, two weeks. All right, no one has anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Ware, Mr. Ritter, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.